That's my son. The first I saw you in here.
Let's come to order, please. Welcome all to our September monthly meeting of the Council of the Borough of Marsville. Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I wanted to ask you all to join me in a moment of silence in the memory of Eric Tomko, who was a former Marsville police officer before joining the Philadelphia Police Force. He had a lot of friends still in this town, and he passed away suddenly Saturday night as a result of a motorcycle accident. So please keep his wife, Caitlin, and daughter Cassidy in your prayers. So let's all stand for a moment of silence in memory of Officer Tomko. Thank you. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to flag, United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask our Borough Manager, in lieu of our Secretary, who's under the weather tonight, to do a roll call for attendance.
Mayor Anderson. Catherine Price Engelhardt.
Present.
Helen Hoold.
Here.
Andrew Lubin.
Here.
Jason Miness.
Here.
Carlitha Murray.
Here.
Bob Paul.
Here.
Scott Robinson.
Here.
Nancy Sherluck.
Here.
Borough Solicitor.
Scott Holbert, on behalf of Flagron Associates.
And Borough Manager, present. Roll call, Council President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our First item of Business, I am pleased to introduce our new full-time police officer, William T. McDonald Jr., who is going to be sworn in by the Chief and the Mayor. And I want to welcome Officer McDonald to the force and to the borough. I'll turn it over to the Chief.
I state, Ken.
I, William McDonald.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
The Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with style.
I will discharge the duties of my office with style.
Officer McDonald, Officer Mark, please.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Officer McDonald.
Welcome, Officer McDonald.
Okay. Officer Todd.
Okay. Just tell him to keep him safe.
Okay. I have one other announcement before we get to the rest of the meeting, and that is, we have, in addition to the agenda, and I want to call for a motion to amend the agenda to add Item 8i. 8i being a call for a motion to authorize a change order for the road paving project in an amount not to exceed $5,000 for Holcrest Avenue and Mercer Avenue. May I have a motion? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you, the motion carries. Now we move on to the public comment section of the meeting. I have the list of people sign up. If anyone else wants to sign up, please do so now. But we're going to start with Michelle McGowan.
Hi, my name's Michelle McGowan. I live at Pennsylvania in Cleveland, and I just came here tonight to talk about the truck traffic on South Pennsylvania. It is very much a nuisance. We have jake braking all night long. The amount of trucks that go by is incredibly insane. There's dump trucks that go by, and recently, within the last two or three months, they have been dropping scrap off the side of the trucks. It's become a very big concern. We had Memorial Day Parade with a corridor on the side of the road because it fell off of one of the dump trucks. There were mufflers under the bridge a little while ago, and just recently, a big piece of scrap fell off under the trucks. We're a walking school district, and we have a lot of kids that walk home that way. It's bad enough they have to come down Route 1 and cross all of that to worry about these trucks on the road. I don't know what we have to do, but we have to do something. They have to, it's decreasing the quality of life of our homes. The value of our homes, it's so dirty, and they shake, they have cracks. It shouldn't be on just Marsville to have all that truck traffic coming through here. So that's one of my big concerns. And then I wanted to bring up something. In one of the meetings recently, it was May or June, we talked about the EIT and the fact that we had a, I believe it was a $700,000 deficit that we needed to fill, and then it was mentioned that the EIT brought in 1.1 million, I think. And I was just curious if in future meetings, we could address what that money is going to be used for, now that we have extra, it sounds like. I'm not sure. So I was just wondering if that could be addressed. Okay? That's all I have.
Thank you. Gary Wallace. And I neglected to preface these remarks by saying that we're limiting you to three minutes. You've been here before, so you know that. So please state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. Gary Wallace, at 719 Crown. I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to get up and thank Council, thank Judith for the support with the EAC and the great things that we are doing. Also, to Catherine and Nancy for putting on such great events. We had the Jive Fest and then the Irish Fest, so great job. We're excited for the tree planting. We hope to do the tree planting November 18th, but we'll also, we'll get that date out to everyone. You know, we're already starting to fundraise, and thank you to the SWP for their assistance as well with this, so we're super excited, you know, to bring some more life down to the Williamson Park and make Marsville beautiful again. So, no, thank you. And then later on, you will see that I am looking to be appointed to the EAC, so I appreciate your consideration for that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Gary Taylor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On the other Gary in town. 405 Hamilton Boulevard, Marsville, Pennsylvania. I wrote all of you and sent you an email earlier today. I'm not sure if you all received it, but hopefully it got to you, but I'd like to make a public statement about that this evening. It's my understanding from the grapevine that someone or multiple people are trying to get our police chief fired or leave the duty. I disagree vehemently with that, to say the least. I'll do anything in my power beyond this to try to change that decision if that decision comes down in a way that would try to get rid of him. He's been here for a long time. My perspective a little bit, I almost wore my uniform that night. I've been doing universal law enforcement, you might say worldwide, for the last 26 years as a retired Army Colonel. And I will say that I know something about law enforcement, and he's done a tremendous job here. A lot of the things that we want in a police, a lot of people, a lot of things that a lot of people want in a police department, he does, which is our community policing. Some of the adults, some of the larger cities that are getting rid of police funds and hiring social workers and others to take over and be at one with the community. He's done this for the time he's been here. He's done an excellent job. I've had many, many interactions with him on many, many different occasions for many, many different things. And I would have to say, I don't think there's been one negative interaction with him in his job here as our police chief. I think if you make that decision, you'll be making a foolish and, I don't know, stupid is the worst I can say, probably a stupid decision in my mind, because finding a police chief that has the same kind of desire to take care of our town and keep it safe will be difficult to find. And he's come from a lot of experience in Philadelphia. I gave you all a list, and I'm going to run down a quick list of this. I also give you some pictures, and I do have a copy of my remarks in case you didn't get the email, so you can have them, and I'll give those to you after my comments. Last week, he was at our town's Truck or Treat, and he had the police car down there with one of the officers and gave out treats for the kids and made sure the place was safe. This past summer, he sponsored movie nights down at the park where a lot of people came. I've often seen him riding on his bike. I talked to Andy the other day, and he says, "Well, not recently." He said, "Well, Andy, you and me are getting older, and so is he." I don't know if it's been the last year, but he oftentimes is doing that. I see him ride his bike around, stop and talk to people. That's what we need. That's the kind of top cop we need in our town. He's heavily involved in the last two National Night Science, sponsoring those along with the Solid Rock Youth Center during the National Night Hour, and you have a picture there. He was one of the dunkies in the dump tank. And that's not the typical thing that you'll find with a police officer who's trying to stand aloof and just not be a part of the people. He wants that interaction with the people and come down to earth with them. We run a daycare, we care to daycare and early learning center. He walked through our facilities with us at our request and gave us input as far as an active shooting incident. He's always willing to help us when we have questions like that. We send him as our annual emergency evacuation plan, which he then has a copy of and looks over and reviews. We also have a Marsville Community Coalition. I'm not sure if many of you know about it, but it has to involve 12 different segments of the community, and then we're able to apply for grants to deal with the youth in our community, and he's been a part of that and come in person sometimes or come on Zoom. When events take place with professional circumstances, you know, kids hanging around the youth center or something happening near the church, he always comes to us and asks for our video and our cameras that we have that are there, and she encouraged us to get, and we do have, and we always share them with them. He's successfully keeping our town safe despite, I think, a number of times when I've heard of us reducing his budget and cutting things and cutting money, he still kept us, kept going, and I'm still, went on when probably other people would have just quit. He took a group of our children when I took them over to the emergency Borough Hall. He talked to them, talked to them as many questions as they want and got to interact with them. He's a speaker of community events, was a speaker of the NDA at our Compass Fellowship over there once, there's a picture there. He, the Solid Rock Youth Center actually has been hard to get grants and other grants for gangs and drug-related things because we don't have that, we don't have enough of a problem here in the data to qualify for the grants, because that's a big problem. I would attribute that to our police chief and to our police force, all of them. And all the things I say about him can be said about our police force and those that follow him in this lead. I finish up this email just saying, I think this is a very critical decision, and I think that all of you need to make sure that you keep him on, because he's done a great job. When we look at people, you know, in a job, the worst thing you want to do is lose a good quality person, because it's very hard to hire and find a good quality person to replace them. And I think if you can keep the talent, you should keep it, and I would suggest that you keep him as our police chief and do everything possible to do that. And if you have any questions and further things, please feel free to talk to me, because I could probably think of a lot of other reasons why we should keep him as our police chief here. And I'm proud of our police force. I support them. My son's an agent and, you know, was a local cop, and so I support them 100%. He's a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much.
Next item of business is approval of minutes. Can I get a motion for the approval of the Borough Council regular meeting minutes for August 15th?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Nancy and Andrew.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on to finance, the Treasurers Report. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list and to pay our bills? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Abstentions? Okay. 7, 4, 1 opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to reports. First up, the Mayor's Report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, of course, let's welcome Officer Todd McDonald, William Todd McDonald, to the Marsville Police Department, and we wish him the best. And so that's an exciting day every time we get to swear someone then. So, quick update, everybody knows by now, we had an officer hurt in an accident, and the Chief will get into a lot more of the details, but I just want to, first of all, thank you, everybody who reached out with their thoughts and prayers, whether it be by social media, email, or whatever way they decided to do it. It is, it was touching and appreciated. So, for those who haven't heard, Mr. Smith was released last night and is expected to just have minor injuries. So I consider that to be a very, I consider him to be very lucky and very blessed, so we'll be thanking him. Since our last meeting, we've had three officers now hurt on duty. We had an incident where two officers were hurt during one incident. So needless to say, that leaves us with no manpower. Now, Chief McClay was able to, you know, cover the shifts and get everybody in right away, and our streets were covered. But my concern is, the same as it's been for a year and a half, is the manpower when things happen. And obviously, this is one of those things, as it usually is, that you can't plan for. So, but we do need, we do still need to increase our manpower, so that's why I'm really excited to see, because we had put forward, the Chief and I, a hiring and retention program to, you know, to do, to get us where we want to be and to plan for our future. So I'm glad to see that we have a G on here, I think it is. So, anyway, so, I ran it out, I've been talking about this the last few months. Republic trash service is, and I think each month I talk about it, my opinions and reports that I get from our residents seem to be getting worse and worse. I'm starting to wonder if that relationship is repairable due to the service we're receiving. I've mentioned before, before Ted Parker left, he had, we had some Republic officials here, they were warned if they didn't start giving better service, the contract would be revisited. So I just, I hope we can get Council and the manager soon to either renegotiate another company. I know nobody wants to hear this, but for $400,000, we could buy a truck and hire a couple employees, but, you know, you got to think about it, because then the next month, or the next year, that cost for the truck is not there, you're paying the employees. So I know we had it in-house for a long time, and, you know, up until probably under 10 years ago. And it was a little different, if I'm not mistaken, because it was billed as opposed to taken out of taxes, which was beneficial to some and not to others, but, you know, for example, now you have property owners paying several Republic bills instead of, you know, the person who lives in that unit, is how it's generally gone. But the bottom line, when it comes to Republic, is I think this, I think this is unrepairable. There's several days where they don't come at all. If, I don't know about you, but if Republic isn't to my house by 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, I start to think they're just not coming. And that's, I shouldn't have to feel like that. After a holiday, we are often, often, often left for three days, and they just keep saying the same thing over and over. They give us the schedule for the rest of the week, that changes the schedule, and it is rarely followed, which means our town has trash all over it all the time. And that is horrible. We have, you know, not just our residents looking at that, but our neighbors that come through here. So, and I'm sorry to go a little long on that, but it is very important, I think it's, and hope it's something we can address in the near future. So just real quick, I do, I know the MEDC had a meeting last week at Summer Seat, and I'm sure, I don't know, are we going to hear some more about that tonight, or are you just here to witness? Okay, but that doesn't matter, to be honest. What I wanted to say is that this group has, this group has a lot of passion, and they've done a lot over the last year, year and a half, and not that they always have, because I think they have, but since I've started speaking with them, I can just see they're passionate and how much they want to, you know, help kickstart the things that we've been trying to do. So I just want to remind everybody in that group that it is much, much, much appreciated, and keep it up, please. I have, I have already notified our town manager, as well as our labor attorney. And the reason I contacted the labor attorney personally is because I don't have a bad relationship with him. And I said to him, I said, "This is nothing personal, and I would like you to hear it from me first." But based, for a few reasons, which I'm going to list in a second, I have asked, I have spoken and will officially ask one day this week, that I request a separate attorney that represents the Mayor's Office. And that is, again, nothing against Chris or anybody else, anybody. I continue to work with everybody I can, but one of the issues, and I think the main issue, it's been made abundantly clear that I'm not being represented and that the client is the Council, which is fine if that's the system, but the Mayor needs someone to speak to for advice as well. So I just wanted to put that out there, so everybody knows that I'll be working on that. I need to get my own representation, so both me and the Council have, you know, the proper representation, and we can all work together still. And to be clear again, there's no issue with anybody in this, it's just a matter of trying to get, you know, the best advice I can to help Marsville. So, all right, I think that was a little long for me, so thank you, everybody, for listening. Have a great day and a great week.
Thank you. Moving on to the police chief's report. Chief McClay, please.
And thank you, Chief, for getting into hospital so quickly last night and making sure everything was taken care of.
Yeah, those phone calls in the middle of the night are not pleasant, but it's part of being a police chief. It's part of having the vehicle at home and being able to respond quickly to situations like that. Last night, Corporal Smith was on Route 1, southbound, Pennsylvania Avenue. He was helping a disabled motorist. The gentleman that hit him came over the Route 1 Bridge from Trenton. Don't know why he didn't see the corporal. He had all his lights on. He could see those lights from 500 yards away. I suspect that he was on a cell phone, because the cell phone ended up going through the windshield of the Honda that he was driving. He shouldn't have been driving. He was driving on a suspended DUI conviction. He had a bench warrant from the Bucks County Court for another DUI. So he was taken into custody and taken up to Bucks County after he was treated at Jefferson Bucks. Corporal Smith sustained some head injuries and neck injuries from the impact. The vehicle was totaled, or it will be totaled, there's no doubt about it. It's really in bad shape. Luckily, it's our oldest vehicle, it's in the fleet. It wasn't one of our brand-new ones, so that was a good thing, so hopefully the insurance money comes in on it. But the most important thing is that bill's okay. I was touched today by the emails and the phone calls that I got from a lot of people. It was really surprising, just asking what they could do. Not a whole lot, but just that they're thinking of it was something that was really, really touched me, to see how many people really care, really know what's going on. It was kind of hard not to tell something was going on last night between the helicopters and all the ambulances and everything else, but we were lucky. We could have lost him. If he was out of his car, he would have been dead. But, so, and I buried way too many of my guys. So with that being said, let's move on. I'm very happy that we welcomed Todd into the family. I'm hoping as we move on, you see on your agenda tonight that, I see you're going to pass, hopefully, the new list that should be coming out at the end of October, and we can move ahead and hire more officers for the future. We're going to need them, we're going to have to come up with a plan on how to attract more officers. There's classes all over the country that they're giving on how to attract more officers, but there's really one thing that we have to really start thinking about, and that's how much money are we going to pay these officers? It's pure economics 101, which is supply and demand. There's a big demand, very little supply. So we can't be the lowest-paid borough, we're close to the lowest-paid borough out there. We have to start thinking about benefits and salaries going into the future. Okay? If we're going to maintain a police department, of what I think we should have, at least 12 officers, full-time. So, consideration to start thinking about. I threw out there before about starting a law enforcement committee. I think that's a good idea, so you're just not hearing, you know, George up here, you're hearing citizens that actually sit down and talk as a group and maybe come up with some different suggestions, rather than just hearing from me of what the police department and what the borough needs. So with that being said, thank you for Pastor Taylor, for all the kind words, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and we'll keep Corporal Bill Smith in our prayers.
I have a question, though, for the Chief.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, we had some residents that brought some things up. I know you were busy with Officer McDonald, but they had brought up that there's a lot of jake brakes going on on South Pennsylvania Avenue, so, and then they also had brought, so, well, I guess the first thing is, like, is there any plans on how you're addressing that? Which leads me into, do you know how close Officer Hallis is into getting his training hours?
The problem isn't in the training hours. I've had him detailed out to other departments and other and other groups so he could get multiple hours in. So he's doing very, very well with that. But our problem is manpower. We've gotten through the summer with putting two people on the street 24 hours a day. We did not miss one day. The guys have worked a lot. They have done a tremendous job. It's manpower. I need more manpower to be able to put him there as a full-time person. But right now, he's been covering just the other shifts just to get through the summer. So as soon as we can do that, I'll pay him all the overtime in the world to get out there and get on these guys. I mean, you see this week, we, to help with John later, we changed the signs down to 25, the electronic signs. So we're waiting. So as soon as I get the manpower, he'll be out there.
Yeah, I just want to also remind the residents that PennDOT came and painted the white 25 miles per hour on South Pennsylvania Avenue and also put up the signs, which did not cost the borough anything. So they changed all the signs. I did talk to Officer Smith, and he said that, and Judith, I guess that would be you talking with John later. He said the signs going south are not very well done, and we might need some more signs in order to be able to pull people over who aren't going 25. But I'm reminding the residents to go 25 because even I have slipped and gone 30.
The suggestion is, after talking to everybody in the community, the biggest problem is the empty ones coming out of Falls Township doing 45 miles an hour because it's legal up there to do 45 miles an hour. If there's any way to talk to PennDOT and get them to slow it up up there so that as they make it into our town, they're down to 25. But they're going from 45 down to 25. So they're just gliding along still at a high rate.
I think PennDOT did the study last year where they actually increased it from 40 to 45. So.
That's great.
I know, I know, that's great. I know.
You know, but that's, I could see that. I could see them flying through Falls. And they get to our place, and they're still flying, and they're coming down, but they're still.
But PennDOT did put the signs at 25 in Falls. So even when you're in Falls, yeah. You see it says 25, right? So, so, you know, I realize that they think, you know, that there's a problem, but I can't really work on Falls. I have to worry about Morrisville.
And I will, I will, when I see the state police again, I've made friends with them. They're welcome to use our scale. They know that. So I'll make friends with them because they're the only ones that can do radar.
Right.
We all know that. So, which would be a wonderful thing if you could get that changed. But I would love to use radar.
One, one quick question, chief. Part-timers, is there any, anybody?
Nope.
No one?
Nobody. This is a problem throughout.
Because we, we are the highest paid in the lower end of the county now because we brought the thing.
Part-timers, yes, we are.
And it's still not attracted anybody to work here.
No, no. I mean, I have a couple of guys that are good, you know, but it's, 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 you know, supply and demand right now. It's horrible. And I won't, I won't bring down my standards. I mean, I have phone calls and I go, no. So it's not worth, you know, together, we've, we haven't had a lawsuit in the last 10 years. And it's because of the quality of officers that you have here. I won't bring that down. So if I get anybody there, you know, and you'll see, I, last, at this September meeting, the gentleman who runs the consortium test said, in the September meeting for the October test, they had 43 people signed up.
That's it?
That's it. Back to that economics 101, supply and demand. It's a tough time, tough time in law enforcement. So, and you hear the governor talk about tax incentives, and that's not going to bring anybody here. I mean, some 24-year-old kid's not thinking, hmm, what's my 1040 going to look like this year? That's ridiculous. What you got to do is you got to pay them more, and you got to give them good benefits. But then again, the kids these days are thinking, how much time am I getting off? You know, that's the first thing out of their mouth. How many, how many days off do I get? How much vacation I get? So it's a whole different animal compared to when I came on and, you know, most of these guys. So, but we have to think about going into the future, about, you know, readjustments to salaries and things like that. It's going to, it's going to have to be a must. And just look at everybody else, what everybody else is paying. And you'll see the difference of the, it's huge differences of salaries. And that makes a difference. Don't let anybody tell you that it doesn't. For everybody, no matter what job you're going into. So, okay?
Can I just also, sorry, Scott, just to radiate the residents, if you could tell your officers to be diligent for the Jake breaks? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the manager's report.
Good evening, everyone. I had the privilege of attending the Williamson Park in-house meeting that was at the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. Our borough engineers were there to prepare a park plan that the residents would like to see. There was a lot of input from residents. We had two groups. It was very interesting to see that the two groups really had a lot of the same ideas. And I'm sure that Parks and Recreation Committee can talk about that more. But I just wanted to let everyone know that in the upcoming months, we'll have information back from the engineering company regarding a proposed plan. So everyone can look forward to seeing that. The other item is, we started our road project on Hillcrest Avenue from Barnsley to Stockham and North Lafayette. Hillcrest, Clymer. That should be completed by the end of this week or next week. We're happy to see that that's moving along quickly. The other item that we've been working on has been the roof. We're working on a kickoff meeting, hopefully, next week. We were trying to do that this week. I'm not sure if it's going to happen. If it doesn't, it'll be next week. So very shortly, you will see a lot of construction vehicles and items going on here at the Borough Hall for some time. We'll be ripping off the old roof and replacing it with a new one. So I'm proud to say that this is a project that's been needed for a long time, and we're happy to say that it's going to finally get completed, and we won't see garbage cans collecting water in the hallway anymore. The other item is the electrical system in the borough. We put that out to bid. We're currently getting bids right now. And as the bids come in, we'll be presenting the lowest bidder to council at the October meeting. So we'll be happy to announce that, too, and we'll look forward to that work being done. All of those things are being paid by the ARPA funds that we have. So we're, again, very proud to say that we have the funds to be able to accomplish these items that have been much needed for the borough. The other item that we're, we're working on, excuse me, is some renovations downstairs. We're in need of office space and so forth. So that's something that we'll be bringing to council in short order to look at also. And I provided my report to council this evening if there's any questions. I do want to say one more thing. I know someone from the audience did mention something about the EIT monies. We will very shortly be advertising our budget meetings. So if there's interested in, interested in attending those meetings, please feel free to do that because we'll be doing that in those budget meetings. You're welcome.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I can ask a question for the mayor, I mean, the manager? Yes, on the report, it says Cloverleaf Property Active Remediation is currently taking place. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, or who's down there, what they're doing?
Certainly. So the, the RDA at this time is in charge of the property. And there was remediation that has been needed for that property. So the RDA hired a firm, and that's what's taking place. The, the property itself is being remediated. So we will hear more from Mr. White and also from the RDA shortly.
Yes, I had the opportunity to talk to the RDA at that Summer Seat meeting, and he said it still needs to be capped.
Correct.
So I'm not too sure, but I told him, we really need him to get moving on this because that's our only really viable open space that we have. And it would be helpful to us to have that done. So he said, he's heard enough from me.
Yeah, they've actually been working on it for some time, and, and they are going to cap it. Meaning, capping means that they're actually covering the, the, should we call the bad stuff?
Yeah.
And so that's what they're working on. And we will eventually have some meetings with council and the RDA and Mr. White and so forth moving forward. But right now, until the remediation is completed, it's, we're really just waiting for that to take place.
A question on that. Mr. White, what capacity is he part of this? Because my understanding is that he is no longer an employee of the RDA. He was consultant for a while, but.
He was a consultant, and I think he would just like to provide council with some input.
Okay.
I've seen him down there at the Cloverleaf Property, Mr. Robert Roy. So I don't know what he's doing, and he's been down there with people.
So it's, I guess it's a, it's a separate business or entity that he's involved in, then?
He was assisting the RDA.
Okay. And then also on the report, it mentioned, remember when Amtrak was here to talk about the bridge? Well, this actually says it would be on our agenda on June 23, which we already did. So we've not heard anything back.
We have not. That's why if there's something that I have not heard back on, instead of removing it from my report, I leave it there until we see something take place. So I emailed Amtrak asking them for some more information as to will they be presenting something new to council? Will they, you know, what are they looking for? And I have not gotten a response.
Have you heard from the public regarding that? Were there any?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to committee reports. Who would like to start with committee reports?
I'll start with Park and Recreation because we've had a busy time.
Great.
First of all, I would like to thank all of you and the community especially who came out and supported the meeting that Judith was just talking about. A lot of participation was given. Nancy had, had taken some minutes that I did publish on various social medias so that people could at least get an idea of what was spoke about. And Judith was right. There was two groups of people. It was really well-run by Gilmore. Her name's Judy. Did I get that right, Judy? And she did a fabulous job in facilitating this meeting so that everybody had a voice and everybody had, you know, a right to say something, and then we put it all together. So we'll be looking forward to that. And if you guys want more, I'll get it out again for anybody who wants to see the minutes on that. So, and also, I would like to talk about the last event we had on Sunday. It was the Irish Fest. And despite the rain that came later on, it was a wonderful and well-attended event. A few hundred people were there. The music was incredible. We had dancers. We had some really nice vendors who said that they had a great experience. We had one woman selling these sweaters from Ireland that were going for up to $200 or $300. And she said she did really well, and I, like, was really shocked, you know, but it went really well. I think one of the best things beside the music and the people that enjoyed it was going over to the children's section. You're seeing little kids running up and down the field with these Dollar Tree kites and parents playing cornhole with their kids and Connect Four and all. It was a great day. So thank you for everyone who volunteered and came out and supported the event. We really appreciate it. And our next meeting is next Tuesday. We'll be talking more about the meeting that we had, the community-wide meeting, and we'll also be talking about our next event, which is the Oktoberfest. And kind of upcoming this fall, tree planting, lots of good things. And, you know, the committee just keeps growing and growing. And I'm just so pleased and proud to be representing this community and their involvement and caring about not only our park but our open spaces. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other committees?
Yes, Finance Committee. Few things. We want to congratulate Catherine on your Irish Festival. May you have many more.
Thank you.
Faith to be Jesus. Do a lot of them. Okay. Finance Committee, we will not have a meeting next week because the chairman will be out of the country. Coming October, we're going to be heavily involved in the budgeting process. So anybody who's interested from the community, wants to come to the budgeting meetings, think about the Finance Committee meeting also. And with that, I turn it over to President Paul.
Thank you. Any other committees?
I have a brief, I'll say for the community choice, sorry.
Go ahead, Jason.
I thought, I thought that I'm fighting coffee at night. I will occasionally start or stop.
Do the best you can.
This, two years ago, we had our August meeting for the Community Choice Aggregation Exploratory Committee. We were able to speak with Dennis Rowan from CCA for PA. We were able to ask him more direct questions, you know, relevant to our account specifically. And overall, I thought it was a very productive meeting. Minutes will be released to the borough when I guess, shortly. I just need to go. I unfortunately been sick for the last two weeks, so I couldn't finish up the meeting minutes. But it's been productive, and I'm hoping our next meeting is also productive.
Thank you, Jason. Get well soon. Any other committees?
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not, this has to do with the library. I just want to make some announcements that we did get the report from the librarian, and she said this summer they had 457 children and 232 adults attend all of their summer library program. And I think it's in, I think it was actually in Judith's report that we have two new hires down at the library. And Jessica is the new children's librarian.
Yes, it was.
And Kevin is the new clerk. So, and if anybody's interested in art, they are having an art class on October 5th and also November 30th. So, and the, the library club has been really successful and has grown to, I think, about 25 or more people. And they just presented a special event. It was Shakespeare's Macbeth, and that was facilitated by the Shakespeare scholar Franklin Hedberg, who is a teacher at Lawrenceville Prep. So some exciting things happening at the library.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other committees? Okay, we'll move on then to the action items. Item 8A, Call for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the annual minimum municipal obligation forms for both the police and non-uniform pension plans to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System by October 4, 2023, and authorizing the borough manager to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Discussion.
I do have a question. Oftentimes, we would have the money in there, the amount. So I said, there's nothing listed, in other words, our obligation, our money obligation. Is that, is that necessary to have it in the?
I believe the paperwork that was in the drop indicated the, the money amount.
That's correct. The police is $53,777, and the regular borough pension is $23,673. But I just didn't know for, because this will be the record, so I just didn't know if we needed it in the motion.
Well, I, I would think, I'll let first listener answer that. But I would think that if the borough manager's authorized a sign, and if she determines that the, the amount is correct, then that's.
Okay.
That's kind of our check on that. But I don't think we need to specify the amount, do we, Mr. Hope?
No. We just need it to be authorized. Your vote authorizing the completion of the forms to be recharged.
Right. Okay, thank you. Oh, we still have to vote on it, don't we?
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second on the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Item 8B, Call for a motion to award the annual 2023 to 2024 Consortium SALT bid as bid through the Bucks County Consortium to Silvy Concrete Products, doing business as Riverside Construction, $66 per ton, price per ton delivered, and $65.85 price per ton undelivered, contract to run to September 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries.
Let's hope we don't use it.
Okay. Item 8C. Call for a motion to authorize the borough manager to issue a request for proposal and to advertise for auditing services for the borough.
So moved.
Second.
I don't know who's
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Item 8D. Call for a motion to accept bid from Homeland Intelligence and Protective Services LLC in the amount of $11,000 to purchase the two police vehicles. Vehicle number one, number 4610, former police chief's and unmarked vehicle, VIN number 1FM5K8AR6EG50204, year 2014, make Ford, model Explorer, mileage 108,845 miles. Vehicle number two, number 4608, former patrol vehicle, VIN number 1FM5K8AR1FGA35413, year 2014. It's a Ford Explorer, mileage 72,757.
So moved.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Were there any other bids in, or was this the only bid or the highest bid?
There was one other bid, and that was sent to you, actually.
It was in the drop.
It was in the drop.
Thank you. I missed that. Thank you.
Combined for like $7,000 or $6,000.
It was a good amount.
It was a low ball, yeah. In any case, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Item 8E. Call for a motion to approve and adopt the resolution for the borough to submit an application to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a statewide local share assessment grant and designating Borough Manager Judith Danko as the official to execute all documents and agreements to facilitate and assist in obtaining requested grant.
So moved.
Discussion.
President Paul?
Yes, Catherine.
I have a question on this. I was at that art, that, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I apologize. So the meeting I went to last week at Summer Seat, I talked to the gentleman who was talking about this grant to us, and I took some time. And there's a lot of great opportunities with this grant in redeveloping our downtown area, working on sidewalks and streets improvement. And so I want to make sure that the council, if you go for this grant, that we're part of that decision-making process, to make sure that we're, you know, because we're always, people are always asking us, what are we going to do about downtown? What are we going to do about the streets? What are we going to do about that? And I just want to make sure that we'll have a say in how this money is spent.
So this grant that I'm going to apply for will be for the Public Works Department for two vehicles. When you talk about grants for the streets and revitalization and so forth, there's so many other grants that are out there for those items. When it comes to items that normally your regular budget would need to pay for, that's what this LSA grant that I have been utilizing since I came to the borough, that's what I use it for, because there are other entities out there, grant entities out there for parks, for recreation, for revitalization, for streets, for stormwater. The LSA grant is and should be used for some of the items that we cannot afford in our budget. There's also no match for this.
That's exactly what he said.
And I've always, since I've been here, I've been utilizing this grant for the items that I know that we need. I had utilized it last year for the police department for their cars. I had also used it for a dump truck for the Public Works Department, which we're still waiting for that vehicle free of charge. So it's alleviated the borough budget for these items that we are greatly in need of, and that's why I've been utilizing this grant as far as I have. So this grant application will be for two vehicles for the Public Works Department.
And we're just learning about that this evening.
I talked about this probably for maybe three months, talked about it. And I also have the paperwork that's in the drop shows what it was for.
Okay, because, you know, he just talked about this being just an amazing opportunity because we don't have to pay it back. And he was saying that this is the kind of stuff that Bristol used to revitalize their downtown. So I just don't want to miss any opportunities that we can have to revitalize our downtown and help businesses grow and that type of thing, so.
I understand, and again, we have we have internal needs that we we really must address. So that's really what I'm focusing on, prioritizing what is needed here at the borough level. And like, as I said, there are other grants out there for revitalization and all of those other things.
But they need but they need matches.
Understand that.
So I mean, I don't know if, maybe I'm confusing this with a different grant, and I'll I'll check that. But we just received this, probably not even three weeks ago, from Steve Santisaro's office. And actually, I was hoping we were going to have a conversation amongst all of us, or at least the finance committee, to find out what would be best utilized this money for. I I don't know if we don't if we don't have any other monies. I do believe that one of the things we have to fix is the drainage on Philadelphia Avenue.
And there are stormwater grants for that, which we could utilize liquid fuels to do the match for that. So that is, again, why I've been using these. I was the person who actually brought this idea to the borough when I came here, because everyone was saying that they had never heard of LSA grants before, and they didn't know that we could use them. And I've been utilizing utilizing them, as I said, as a budget item that we don't have to spend money for, because we don't have the money in our budget for these items. So that is my goal, to continue to do that, because, as I said, there's other grants out there for all these other items.
I would like to suggest that we start on another grant to get the piping corrected in the 200 block of Philadelphia Avenue. I talked to John later about this, and he said there's really no tie-in. And this is at 215 Philadelphia. It's 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 indeplorable. It's not going anywhere. It's like a foot high.
And I understand that, Nancy. I know that it's been like that for decades, and
Well, not decades, no, not decades, but the last four years, maybe four or five years.
I was informed it had been that way for a pretty long time, more like a decade or so. And those are things that eventually I would like to branch out to look into and so forth. But currently, as I said, I have a prioritization list of items that we're trying to do and utilize for our borough employees that work here, just as we just did for the police department. I'm trying to also do that for our Public Works Department. Our employees need the tools to do their jobs. It's very important and it's vital that they have those tools to do their jobs, and I'm trying to provide those items to them.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I'd really like to make a move on this on this other pipe that's not there. There wouldn't have to be a tie-in to Baker Avenue.
As time permits, those are things that we will look at.
Thank you.
Also, it got, it was bad, but it got really bad lately with the, when the railroad redid their
Across the street, yes.
Off the avenue.
Right. I'm doing the best I can with the time I have, and we're, as I said, prioritizing, and that is on our list. It's an item that's on our list.
Okay, moving on. Item 8F. Call for a motion, oh, we never voted on that? Sorry about that.
But no, we
No, we didn't.
Well, Nancy had made a motion and
And Andrew, I think, was the second.
Andrew seconded it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries. Item 8F. Call for a motion to approve the placement and decide on the locations for drop-off bins to be placed in the borough-owned parking lot of the Marsville Senior Center. The Marsville Senior Center, in partnership with HelpSee, has requested to place drop-off bins in the borough-owned parking lot to allow for clothing and textile collection in an effort to fund raise for the center.
So moved.
Discussion.
Where is this going to go?
Go ahead, Catherine.
The whole mic is falling. My mic is falling. It's not my fault. This was presented to the senior board at our last meeting. I'm on that senior board. And it's, I think you've seen them around town, there are these bins. Really depends on the best place that maybe John later that can, or somebody from the council can can help us decide where they're the best located.
Sure. I had sent an email back to the requester asking, my only concern was that if there were complaints and this did not work, were they signing a contract that we could then say, this must be removed because it's not working out? I did not get a response, but during comment session like now, that's why I'm asking council to know that I would hope that this vote would be contingent upon that if it does not work out, we can say this needs to be removed.
When I talked to Tracy and our borough, I mean, not our borough manager, but our our senior manager there, they said that 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 the contract did allow us to back out. And that's what they told me, but I haven't seen the contract. So I would maybe if we approve it on contingency, that we can back out at any time.
Self-penalty.
I would appreciate that.
Yes. I mean, that's what I would add to it.
Yes, thank you.
If you choose to decide to vote.
Thank you.
You need to alter the
Did you, did you tell me where it was going? I'm sorry.
John later would decide.
Yeah, you can just, you can make that your motion. That'll be contingent upon it. You don't need a formal. It seems you're all agreeing with that, so.
I said that that would be something like John later and stuff would probably decide where we'd be.
My only concern is when you're down there on a Wednesday night, when they're playing bingo, and when you're down there for any kind of events, there's really no place to park. The parking lot gets pretty full, especially like when they have the breakfasts and, you know, you have the officers going back and forth to go to court. So I'm just concerned, is it going to take up space?
I don't know that, to be sure, because I think we'll have to figure out with John where it best placed, so it doesn't take up, because you're right, it becomes very full back there. It might be even to the far corner. I don't know yet.
John, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah.
Well, what do you think about the
I'll take a look. I'll see. I'll try to
Should we table this until you figure all this out?
If we can back out, if it's not working out, that's, that's, that's how we can do it. You're right, it is
I don't think it would take more than one spot, though, right?
I don't know how many bins. Sometimes I see two, three, four bins.
I don't think it'll be more than two bins. I'm almost, I'm positive it's no more than two bins.
It's really not a lot of space.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
Let's put it where, I apologize. I was gonna say, then let's put it where the road's not so great, or less people park. It's too wet there.
Is part of this motion, explain this to me, Mr. Solicitor, is part of this motion that we also identify the location? It says decide, it says decide on the locations. What does that mean?
Well
I don't know what that means.
We'll decide on the locations.
Well, then that's not, then the motion's really just to approve?
Yes, to approve us to doing it.
Just to just to approve the bins?
Yes.
And why, we're not approving the placement or the location, because that's going to be determined later.
The location is actually at the, on the borough parking lot property, so that's why we have to approve it. That's what you're approving.
Okay.
Where on the borough parking lot property?
John will decide.
Your staff to find the best spot for it.
Great, sure.
And if they can't find a spot, then it doesn't work, right?
Exactly.
Okay, we ready to vote?
So are we, are we changing this motion to add the extra language?
It's been changed. You don't need to take a formal vote on it. You guys all agree on it, you're fine.
Okay.
Okay, well, borough solicitor tells us we're okay.
We have a motion and a second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions.
I abstain since I'm on the
Okay. Fair enough. You're recusing yourself.
I'm accusing myself.
Okay, thank you. 701. Motion carries. Moving on to item 8G. Call for a motion to consider directing the Civil Service Commission to approve the next full-time police officer consortium hiring list.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to be clear that this is not to hire an officer, and this is just to work with civil service in order to get a list together, correct?
That is correct at this time, unless council chooses in the future to do something different.
As I understand it, we we need to approve the hiring list if we end up wanting to hire anybody from that list, and we haven't made that decision yet, but we'd be foreclosed later if we wanted to, if we didn't approve it now.
So Barb, what time, what date is the the exam?
October 25th, is that right, chief?
No.
8th?
28th.
28th.
October 28th? Thank you.
And what would you do? Would you start like the whole process now of talking to the officers, or you would wait till October 28th?
I think I'd get the list, probably within five to 10 days after, because they have the process to get the list. But I wouldn't want to work in 20 days until you tell us to start the process, because we've got the turning phase there.
Right.
Okay.
But that was really what we were trying to accomplish tonight. That's why I wanted them to have the ability to do, already do that. Even though we will acquire those fees, we we at this time need to be prepared for, you know, if we do have the need for anything that takes place, especially with what we talked about, so.
Right, because we don't have anyone left on the on the old list.
Exactly, exactly. So I, this vote, I believe, is for them to follow through.
Whatever you direct us to do.
Yes, that's
But it's just to follow through to create a list, not to hire from
Right, not to hire from it, but just to
Yeah, if you were still the hiring agency, you would still have to take another vote, but this is to, you know, direct the Civil Service Commission to begin going through the list and starting the process to certify the list back to council.
You want us to get out the page? You want us to do all that? But that's part of the process to generate our list.
Yeah, I would say, I would say based on what you're voting on, yes, this way, when you need the manpower for the chief and the the mayor to fill spots and with manpower, the idea is we have a list and we're not waiting until there's a spot. We can look at that list and then say, chief lets us know he needs an officer. Council's ready to hire, they can hire. So yes, we would want you to go through the, yeah.
Can you send me an email, Judith?
I had planned on it.
Question we all have.
Who was the second on that, Carlita?
I have Helen as a motion and Catherine as a second. Did I not hear that correctly?
I don't know. It's been a while.
There's like four people, so.
Sure, yeah.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I know we have talked in the past about being ready for our, for when that list is complete, so this was a huge first step. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, moving on to item 8H. Call for a motion to approve advertising the sale of a Fuji Code One Police Mountain Bike, 27-speed Shimano components with dual disc brakes, large, priced $350.
So moved.
Discussion.
So why, can I just ask, I mean, we're, we're starting to hire younger officers, is there no need for the bicycle going forward? At some point, somebody may want it?
I didn't hear what you said, Chief, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't hear you either.
Yes, we put a truck and a first officer out there.
I, I still didn't hear you. Well, yeah, that's your priority, but I'm just asking if So no officer other than yourself wants to be on a Well, you, you ride the bike and you still patrol, what's
Right, that's an addition.
Okay. Oh, okay, that's my, that's my only question, is if there was ever going to be a need. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, the motion carries. And now, the new action item 8I. Call for a motion to authorize a change order for the road paving project in an amount not to exceed $5,000 for Hillcrest Avenue and Mercer Avenue.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Now, we have, we have two appointments to approve, right, and we went through this as a motion, we just do an approval. Anyway, one is for the Economic Development Corporation, it's a three-year appointment, the term expires September 30, 2023, so it's a, it's a, it's going to be a two-week appointment? A one-week appointment?
No, the current term
Oh, so this is
So those, they will start 10/1, 2023.
So, so for this appointment, the term is expiring 26, you're saying?
Correct. He's being reappointed, his term
Oh, okay.
So that's why it's written that way.
It's, 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 it's scrutable, the way it's written, anyway.
I agree with you, Bob.
Apparently, we're, we're reappointing Curtis Kelly, based on his letter of interest to be reappointed to the Economic Development Corporation, and as I understand it, that term will run through September 30, 2026.
I think that someone has to nominate Curtis Kelly.
Oh, is that what we do?
Yeah, I nominate Kurt Kelly, Curtis. I second that.
Thank you. Second, any, any discussion?
No need
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, how about the Environmental Advisory Council? We got a letter of interest from Gary Wallace for a, for the remainder of a three-year term that expires on December 19, 2025.
I'd like to nominate Gary Wallace.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Wallace.
And Mr. Kelly.
And Mr. Kelly, wherever you are. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And on to other business. Who's got other business? Okay, no other business?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
October 7th is, is the, our next event, it's Oktoberfest, goes from 12 to 4 down in the park. We have the usual suspects of a bouncy house, food trucks, some vendors, and a traveling farm. Hope everybody can come.
And I'd like to thank the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation for providing the band and our music, thank you so much, it's been a big help this summer, thank you.
And they're called the Juke, what are they, the Jukebox something? Jukebox Graveyard, sounds thrilling for October, huh?
I saw them a couple months ago, they're actually pretty good, they're older guys, one of them's neighbors with a, with a friend of mine down at Feasterville, they played up at the Marshall Tavern, they're a classic rock band, and they have a lot of fun when they, when they play, they're, they're entertaining, I would definitely go see them again, they're good.
Well, we'll see you there, Scott. It's a Saturday, by the way.
Any other business?
Make a motion to a
What, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to make a motion to adjourn.
Well, I was going to ask about borough officials, do we have to ask any borough officials?
Stop being insane.
Okay, we did that. Okay, I also, I do want to point out that we'll have an upcoming, wait, is this, this is the one we just filled, is it? This is a different one?
That's going to be another, there'll be another
Okay, we have an upcoming opening in the environment, on the Environmental Advisory Council for a three-year term that will expire December 19, well, again, this is December 19, 2023, so it's, it's just a
Yes, this is, this is an update, someone's going to be expiring, so we'll all be reappointing someone for the new term. It's not open right now.
And we're actually waiting for the, for the EAC to provide their information to us.
See, what I don't understand is, I don't know why we don't identify what the new term's going to be, rather than, we're talking about the old term, but, no, we, we got that, actually, yeah.
We would be putting, Gary was put on, but you have another one that
It's an immediate opening, right?
Really, yeah, but you, you can't vacate that yourselves, you need us to do that for you. Okay.
Can we have that motion, or, I mean, I'll make that motion if it's legitimate.
The plan was to have it done at the next meeting.
I'm talking about the vacation. The vacating.
It should still be done at the next meeting.
Do you need us to vacate tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and
Yeah, I can just add
There's no one in the seat, it's vacated, it's on its own, you guys can do it, council is not required to vacate any seats except for
Right, but I have to
Law laws do not apply to council, though, they don't have to vacate it, if you guys vacated it, you reported to us, it's open then.
Okay, then that's one?
Right. You'll get it. Okay, Ms. Sherlock.
Motion to adjourn, is that what you meant?
Yeah, second? Anywhere?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, you can stay by yourself.
No opposed, no abstentions, okay.
I need your signatures and
Thank you all for coming. See you next month.
Good night, everyone, I'm going to, I'm going to hang the phone up, good night, guys.